We go. I'd like to call the school committee meeting for Monday, October 15th, 2018, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped by our Dartmouth Community Television and also our students at Dartmouth High School. It'll be available Wednesday and Friday nights, some on Sunday and other times that DCTV is able to plug us in, and we appreciate that. Also, if you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, electronic devices, things of that nature, if you could shut them off or put them on silent, I would appreciate it. Roll call, please, Ms. Condon.
John Noons.
Yep.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Carol Karafotis.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, we've put 10 minutes on the agenda for anyone who wishes in the audience that would like to talk about anything that's on our agenda tonight. Okay, that being done, don't all rush at once, no problem. Next item is the approval of the regular session minutes of September 17th, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Dr. Karafotis on the motion. Any discussion? Chair hearing, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
I will say Mr. Chair, because I was not present.
Yep. Dr. Jenkins will abstain, so passes 401. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Dr. Gifford or Mr. Kylie, recognition?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Noons. Tonight, it gives us great pleasure to be able to recognize our maintenance and custodial staff, and obviously, I'm going to have them all come up, because we're going to take a group picture. But, you know, it's, yeah, there's no getting out of it.
That's it.
It, it just truly amazes me, and as we look through our buildings, you just saw even coming down this hallway today, how beautiful it looks. I mean, for the age of our buildings, the upkeep that these folks do to make sure that it, we just have a great environment for kids, is, I just get amazed. I remember walking into Cushman this summer, and it was a complete disaster, where, you know, obviously, it was torn apart, because kids had left, and thinking and talking to the custodians, saying, "I can't believe they have this ready," and then, within a month or so, it's beyond. As well as the projects that they get done, as you know, we are really blessed to have these folks as part of our team, and what makes Dartmouth a very special place to be. So with that, we're going to ask them to come up, we're going to have Mr. Kylie talk about some of the projects and announce their names of all of our staff, so.
Come on up, everybody.
Come on.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please.
We make the kids do it all the time.
That's it.
Anybody, Lee, has to stand in front.
Yep. I think we have one in training.
There we go. Starting them young.
Yes.
So I just wanted to reiterate what, what Dr. Gifford said. It's, it's critical that we're ready to serve students every day, and we couldn't, could not do that without you. We appreciate all that you do, particularly, one of the intents of this was to give you some feedback on the great job you did over the summer, getting the schools ready. There was a number of projects, some of which are still going on, unfortunately, like the middle school roof, the high school innovation lab, the Potter School modular project, there was summer school here at Quinn. Next summer, DeMello's going to get the modular redone, so those things change the game for everybody when you're cleaning, you know, when you're getting a building ready, and you're spending all this time focused on these projects. So we just appreciate all your efforts to make that happen and be ready for, be ready for the kids each and every day, so we just want to thank you. I'm going to read everybody's names. We have Richard Ferreira, our facilities director. We have Joseph Madeiras, Ricardo Melo, Steve Hullett, Tony Pacheco, Alan Braley, Bobby Ferreira. We have, at the high school, Nick Chamberlain, Kevin Abrantes, Eddie Goncalo, Richie Pereira, Joe Cunha, Jose Freitas. The middle school, we have Randy Pont, Frank Amaral, Tony Camara, James Riley. The Quinn School, we have Robert Noons, Jim Brogdon, Maria Rocha, Tom Mandanka. DeMello, we have Joe Fritz, Mark Ferreira, John Cabral. Potter, we have Butch Sharpentier, who I'm going to congratulate on his very recent retirement. Dave Richard, Dan DeSilva, Mike Bosch and at Cushman, along with Donnie Green. Did I miss anybody? I think I got everybody. So we just want to thank you again for all you do. Really appreciate it. Turn towards, like toward, over there, just, we want to get a group shot. Thanks again, everybody.
Comments from the committee? Hang on, guys.
Just a minute.
Chris.
I would just like to take a minute and say thank you to each and every one of you. It was a hot and humid and a short summer, so, I know, I work in a school over the summer, I know what it's like to be in the, be in there, so what a phenomenal job. You do every year. This is no exception, but we just know there was a lot going on this summer, and it was an extremely warm summer, so thank you.
I'd like to thank you also for the work you've done, and as Mr. Oliver said, it's not just for this year. For many years, every year, you guys do, and women do, a wonderful job getting our schools ready and maintaining them all through the year, and I think it's something we should do for all our support staff, our secretaries, cafeteria workers. Without you behind us, we wouldn't be having the school system we have, and we appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
So now you've got to wait, you've got to wait for all of us. That's how politics works, unfortunately. Once one talks, everyone talks.
Everybody gets, everybody gets a chance.
But I will reiterate, and we're all going to say the same thing, thank you. We are very appreciative of all the work that you do, and I think we're extraordinarily lucky to have such a dedicated and talented staff to help us out. I don't think the people in this community know how much money your hard work saves us. I think sometimes they see, right, why are we paying all these people? But the work that you do keeps our buildings new and fresh, and is really important to make us a great school system, so thank you.
Yeah, and I reiterate, everything that they've said, I mean, just looking at the pictures of the projects and all of the work that you put in was just exhausting to me. I painted my living room, and I can't even imagine, I was just like, ooh, I'm done. But also, though, I have to say that some of you that I have met in my own, you know, with my three children, some of you are my son's favorite people, and you're just really amazing, and you really have a smile on your face, and you really impact, you just never know the impact you have on a student, just work aside, hard work aside, it's just, thank you.
That's true, that's true.
Again, I think you guys know, and I'm sounding like a broken record, but again, thank you very much for all your hard work. Couple of meetings that we had this summer, Mr. Kylie had pitches of the projects that were ongoing, and kind of had like a before, and, you know, whenever the meeting was, here's where they, and then, you know, at the end, and to see what they look like now is fantastic. In some instances, in most instances, under some tough conditions between, you know, schools being ripped apart and the heat that we had this summer, so, you know, thank you very much, and a job well done. Much appreciated.
Now you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, they're all set, we're all set. Moving on, our student rep report, Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Recently, the band earned four first-place finishes to begin their competition season, as well as our Dartmouth volleyball girls team beat an undefeated New Bedford, which was a great win. On October 10th, seven DHS students attended the Game Change Leadership Conference at Gillette Stadium, hosted by Northeastern University, and one of our seniors, Hannah Carvallo, received an award of recognition from Attorney General Maury Healy, as well as Robert Kraft, for her leadership in the game change program at the Dartmouth High School, and that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Shane before he?
No, thank you.
Nope, okay. Go home and do your homework.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Have a good day.
All right.
Just give me a minute.
Okay. She's waiting till, yeah, you want to flip them?
That's, yeah, let's do this first.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. We're waiting for Ms. Church to show up, so we'll flip off for her, and we'll take, we'll get into the state assessment data.
Yep.
Ms. Roy.
So, good evening. I know you're all excited to hear the presentation on the student assessment results. I did change it up a little bit this year, because the state changed up quite a bit of the way that they present us with their results. So let me just refresh a little bit of your memory, and then we'll go through some of the data, and hopefully, be able to wrap our heads around the new system. That's my goal for the night. So, a couple of the things that we know. One is the system that we worked with last year, what, and in previous years, at the high school and in science, is what they're calling the legacy MCAS, which means that this MCAS that's been in place and wasn't changed when they went to Park. So we did that in all of the sciences, five, eight, and, at the high school, and ELA and math at the high school. The new MCAS is what they're referring to as next-generation MCAS. Remember, they went through some iteration of MCAS 2.0 and all of that, but it's the new assessment that we are given that aligns the state standards for ELA and math, three through eight. And the other thing that we do know is that we administered the new MCAS, computer-based, in grades three through eight, for the past two years. So what's expected to be upcoming? So the expectation for the state is that, again, all assessments in ELA and math, grades three through eight, will be given computer-based for the third year for Dartmouth, that they are going to be administering science in those grades, which would be five and eight, computer-based, and that they are, this will be the first year, grade 10 administers ELA and math, computer-based. What they're still doing, paper-based, will be the high school science. They will be piloting some, or what they're calling field testing, some computer-based pieces in biology and introductory to physics for a portion of the students. Not all of the students, it's sort of what they did last year for the ELA and math, so there'll be field testing parts of the assessment. We do know that the graduation requirements, our competency determination for, currently in place, will be maintained through the class of 2019, so that, at this point, means they have to be proficient in ELA and math, and they have to be needs improvement in science with the, what they call a EPP plan. So what they are predicting, what they're recommending to the Board of Education in this fall, hopefully, will, will be that the classes, it's anticipated that classes of 2020 and 2021 will have a similar threshold in scale score that they have to meet to be proficient under the legacy. So they're, they're going to try to equate that same measure using the scaled score versus, the scale scores that we use now versus what they're doing under the legacy. So that's what they're anticipating the change is going to be. All right, so a quick, just a quick piece. This is, this is a very funneled system, so it has two main components. So you have this on your handout, so it's a little bit bigger than the, what I have up here, but, so for those non-high schools, which would be our elementaries and middle, the achievement components, which would be their scale score, whether they met expectations, exceeded expectations, partially met, or did not meet, for ELA, math, and, under the old method for science, amounts for 60% of the overall rating for a, the school that the accountability is measured for. They, they use growth for ELA and math, and that accounts for 20%. The old commissioner was pretty adamant that he wanted to maintain the three-to-one ratio between achievement and growth, and many of us felt like that should be more of a balance. We value the growth just as much as we value the achievement. The new commissioner didn't want to change that quite yet, till he had a chance to assess the system, so they maintained that three-to-one ratio. What they added to the measures for those non-high schools were how much progress our English language learners were made, making on their assessment, whether they met their expected growth. Chronic absenteeism, which meant if you were out for more than 10% of your days in membership, so you didn't have to be here 180 days, it would just be 10%, and they did the percentage of students who were either here or not here, depending on how you were thinking of it. And, so that amounted for all the K8 schools. The high school has a couple additional measures. So since the high school doesn't have a large enough subgroup for ELL, that part's taken out, all right? So what they do is they divide that 10% up in that same three-to-one ratio. So instead of the high school being 40 to 20, it's now 47.5 and 22.5. They add in the dropout, the graduation rates, and what they call the re-engagement, so if a student hasn't graduated beyond that, or they've left, what do we do to bring them back? Okay? And they also have the additional, besides the absenteeism, advanced coursework, which is, there's a, there's a listing that the state provides for what would be counted, so, and it's just 11th and 12th grade. So it'd be all your APs, many of your honors, and some of the higher-level maths that may not carry the name of honors, but there's, there's probably a four pages listed, including things that we don't offer, like baccalaureate, international baccalaureate-type courses and things like that. So all of that, put together, for both all students and our low performers, is how they do the accountability rating, so it's, it's a little bit extensive. So I'm going to take you through some of it. So the, we're going to start with the high school, because that remains the same. It has remained that we were using CPI, which awarded so many points, depending on how you score. So what you can see in the high school for grade 10 is that it's pretty much been going up for 10 years. We have some higher and some lower, but the current year, for 2018, is the second highest in each of those areas overall. So we're making strong progress toward all students meeting their targets, or in this case, proficiency. So that's nice to see. We've had some ups and downs, but we're moving in that trajectory toward that higher achievement. Now, at some point, it does cap off, right? So you can't go any higher than 100, so you can see the English in blue sort of hitting up against that top part, but they're all continually making, making that improvement. The other piece we look at is how, how do we measure compared to the state? So Dartmouth is in the blue, and the state's in the yellow, and these are our past five years. So you can see for ELA, for Dartmouth, percent proficient or advanced is capping out around 95, 96, and the state is maintaining around 90, 91. So we're doing fairly well compared to the state. 262 of our students have met that threshold. This is a new piece I put together, which has got a lot of data in it, so I'll kind of walk you through it, but it kind of looks at the old system a little bit compared to the new system. So the old system, if you remember, I gave you some bar graphs, and they were colored, so the red on the bottom shows the percent that were failing, or didn't meet the expectation. The orange was the needs improvement, or the partially met. The green was the proficient, or the met, and then the blue was the exceeded or advanced. And these are, what I did was each of the grades, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so you can see that we have pretty, a pretty good look at, they start off in third grade, we've got a little bigger band in that partially met, gets a little bit slower as they, a little bit smaller as they move across, okay? And consequently, the green part, which is the met expectation, will get a little bit wider, and in some cases, we have some larger parts at the top. So we're pretty steady in that piece. But what I wanted to look at is the new measure, which is their scaled score, their average scaled score, which is less impacted by extreme highs and extreme lows, right? So this is, the first column would be Dartmouth scored, average scaled score for 2017, and the average scaled score for 2018. Meeting the expectation is 500, and then 30 points above that, 530 would be exceeding, and 30 points below that would be the partially met or the decline. So you can see grade three, I started a little bit, because at this point, it's still a little bit below Massachusetts, right? 499.3, 502. We went down a little bit, and the state went up. So that's a piece we want to unpack. Grade four, you can see all of these other grades, we've got some nice, strong improvement. I would look at somewhere around a five point as being a significant one. So most of these are six, 5.8, 6.7, 8.8, and 9.0 improvement in each of those grades for ELA. And overall, three through eight, 6.3. So that's good news. A lot of the components we put in place for ELA to strengthen that are working, right? And we also talked about 2017 being our first year, right, on taking computer-based measurements. So we look at both of those. It is the first year of the baseline, and we are also adjusting to the platform, taking it online, and also adjusting to the expectation, so we're, we're showing some strong growth in ELA. Any questions on that one? There's a lot of data in there. And then, what I mentioned a little?
Quick, quick question. How do you, how do they come up, it says scaled score, how do they come up with that scaled score?
How do they come up with the average?
Yeah, the number.
It's just simply all of the students divided, what they scored divided by how many students there are. Yep, and, and for the schools, when they get these, they would have had to have been students they had October 1st, prior to October 1st. They can't just show up in February and be counted in the school score. For the district, all the students that took the assessment will count.
Thank you.
The second component I mentioned a little bit when I was kind of giving you an overview of the accountability system, is you remember in the past, they've done all of our students compared to the high needs students, which were special ed, ELL, and economically disadvantaged. The state said, "We're not going to do that anymore. We're going to take all your students compared to your lowest performers from the previous year." So they took the lowest performers that we had, no matter what subgroup they belonged to, and identified them, and they had to have been with us for two years. They had to have been our students for the previous two years, and they said, "How did they do in 2018?" So it wasn't an easy data to get, because it didn't really make it an official subgroup on our assessment page, but it is an accountability measure. So you can see, in blue, for grades three through eight, would be all of our, the scale, the average scale score of all the students in grades three through eight, and in green would be the average scale score of our low performers. So there, there's about of a, you know, plus or minus a little bit, about a 20-point gap consistently. There's not an extremely larger one in one grade, extremely smaller one. It starts about 20, and it finishes about 20. So it's not a, while we work with our low performers, we identify those students that are at risk, who need interventions, the gap doesn't seem to widen or narrow in any particular area, which was something I just wanted to look at. So for math, compared to the state, you can see Dartmouth in blue, the state is in yellow. We had 237 students who were proficient or advanced, so you can see we're, we're inching back up in math. Remember, 2014 was a strong year for us. We had a strong performance by a couple of our subgroups, and then we went down a little bit, and now we're moving back up. So this, this is that same chart that I wanted to see for each of the grade levels. So you can see, in math, the old method of looking at the barcode, how are they doing in each of the areas, the new method, looking at the scale score. So in grades three and four, you can see I've starred those a little bit, we're just slightly below the state, maybe a point or two. We want to try to unpack what, what area the students are breaking down in a little bit, but you can see in grade four, we went down 1.6. The state went down on that test, and then each of the other grades went up, until grade eight went down slightly, but the state went down. So overall, pretty even. We had a change of 0.4. Overall, the state was zero point, negative 0.4. So we're keeping pace in that section, but we do want to take a look at grade three and four math. And this is that low performer. I just wanted to see how those, again, how that group was doing compared to all performers, and again, it's about a 20-point difference. So if you think that the all performers are right around that 500, which is that meeting expectation, and the lower performers are in that middle portion of the partially met, so we need to figure out how we can work with them, move them up. Science, again, Dartmouth's in blue, the state's in yellow. We had 230 proficient or advanced. I just kept that same standard, even though it's, the threshold is a little bit lower, and you can see we're doing very well compared to the state over the course of those five years. And the science measure is not scaled score, it's that CPI, that old method, because they haven't moved to the next generation. So we can see a strong improvement in grades five, 4.8 improvement from the previous year, a little bit of a dip in grade eight, and pretty, pretty flat in grade 10. Overall, .6 compared to a negative .5 for the state. Remember that science is still adjusting to the alignment to the new standards, and the test is also jumping, so we'll, we'll see a little bit of a ups and downs as that kind of settles in. We expect that to be fully aligned next year.
Can I, can I ask a question about that?
Yep.
So in most of the left and the right half, your presentation seems to go together, right? In terms of the numbers, but if you look at the old way of looking at it, in grade 10, right, like the blue is really big, the green's really big, but then if you look at the composite score, barely budging. So what's, what's the differences going on there? If you look at just the graphs, it looks like in grade 10, they're doing great.
Right, right, well.
Right, so what's the, I'm, I'm just.
So, where is it, on the side?
On the left side, right? The blue is really big, and the green's really big compared to the other graphs.
All right, well, all right, so.
I'm just a little confused. If I look on the left, I think grade 10 is doing awesome, and then if I look in the right, I'm like, oh.
And I used to be a high school math teacher, so we used to say, you know, "Look, we fixed them all." No, it, you know, the threshold for meeting that expectation, the state played with that, you know, they didn't want a lot of students not to graduate. So this, when they set those thresholds, they were, I don't want to say easier, but they were more reasonable for them to meet the expectation.
Okay.
So.
So more of a meeting expectation, but the scores aren't changing that much.
They, they, that threshold setting is a little more accessible in the grade ten section now. I would, I don't expect that they're going to, all of a sudden, when they go to the computer-based scaled score piece, they're all of a sudden going to make it that much harder and therefore, a lot more students are going to make those expectations. I expect them to make that very similar.
Okay.
So, yeah. You'll see that if you look historically for MCAS for a while, that they, that all of a sudden will jump up in grade ten. All right, so this is the growth, the one that we really look at. Not that we don't unpack the scaled score and that, because we want to find out how they're doing on each of the questions. But we really want to know is are all of our students growing, right? So this is a, one of the more stable looks. One of the things they've done with growth now at some of the, the other grades that they haven't done here is remember they did median for growth? And now they've settled, when we look at grades three through eight, they're settling into mean. And so it's a slightly different measure for a central tendency, but the target is forty to sixty. So we want to see the growth in that yellow band or higher. So this is a ten-year look at ELA and math. So if you remember, one of our goals as the district, right, was to bring that math group up. So it started here in twenty-two, twenty-nine, thirty-one, and forty. So it's, it's for the first year in a while in that typical band. This year in two thousand fourteen, we've been able to unpack it a little bit. We had a real strong growing subgroup of special needs students in that particular group. Those subgroups are very small in grade ten, you know, between twenty and thirty special needs students. So some that do very successfully can really boost some of that growth up. So that was a really high-performing year for math for them. ELA was a little bit less impacted. So ELA is a little bit down, right? So math was at forty-two point eight, ELA, I think I said those backwards, ELA is forty point one. So they're both in the typical band, okay? Now, that doesn't mean we don't want them higher, but they're both in the typical band for the first time in probably in five years. So that's good to see. If you remember, we had made Algebra I a year-long course. And now we're going to have both Algebra I, a year-long, and Geometry, a year-long. So that'll be a good basis for them on that achievement. And so those are a couple of things we've been talking about. So again, we're looking at all performers versus low performers, and I wanted to see if there was a difference in growth. So in three through eight, our, all students are growing. Remember, the target is forty to sixty, so all students are fifty-eight point three in ELA. That's almost up to the, the high end, which is sixty, higher than sixty. Our low performers are fifty-four point five. Again, good growth from both groups. For, again, three through eight, math, all performers in those grades, fifty-four point eight, and low performers actually outgrowing them at fifty-five point nine. So the low performers are a bottom twenty-five percent of the students, okay? For the high school, we have a little bit of a gap here we want to look at. Okay, you can see the all performers and low performers in ELA, forty and thirty-four point two, again. We want to take a look at that. And for math, forty-two point eight and twenty-five point five. If you remember, part of the change in the schedule provided the high school this, this year with a block for academic support, okay? Those interventions have been in place in the elementary and the middle school for a few years. And the high school had a tutorial for those students who were special needs, and they had after-school support, but they didn't have anything during the day. So it'll be important to identify those kids early and help them with some, with some support and interventions in courses that they're struggling with. So we can see a gap there. This, this is a big chart. This takes a look at something we talked about last year. So how are they doing in ELA? What do we need to focus on? And if you remember, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about the work on the essay, really getting them to write more, getting them feedback on their writing, building up their stamina. Remember, Mr. Robidoux talked about that when he gave his school improvement plan. So you can see the ones in red would be anything we still need to work on. So you can see our grade three essay, right, is worth fourteen points. We are getting twenty-four percent of those points. Okay, that's down from the previous year. The state went down also, but not by that much. But every other place, you can see strong growth in the essay, which is a major part, a major part of the test. So you see fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Seventh and eighth grade with double-digit growth in the essay. The state did grow a little bit, but not to that extent, okay? And the short response, again, another component of the, worth twenty-seven points, showing strong numbers in comparison to state. So we still want to look at that third grade essay. Unfortunately, we don't get the student responses back. We do get the students' writing for fourth grade. We get the question, one of the two essays for third grade. So we can take a look at what that looked like in eighteen and seventeen. And it is not just the third grade, it builds up to third grade, right? Writing is not just responsibility of that third-grade teacher. So how are we building that K one, two, and three? And you've heard a little bit about the Lucy Cockens Units of Studies for Reading and Writing and the, all the work the teachers are doing on that. So we need to see that sustain and build its, build itself up. But we're seeing some strong work in that. And looking, we talked about on the bottom, increased opportunities for them to read and write with feedback, looking at them doing that daily, building that stamina up, continuing to work on, in small groups, on giving them specific feedback on their own writing. When we visit the classes, we can see all the teachers working on stretching their writing, putting emotion into their writing. So they all have the same language now in that instruction. So there's really a concerted effort on that piece. The assessments, we're looking at, you know, adjusting our practices based on the data. So are there any areas that we're doing really well in that we can, you know, compact a little bit, spend more time on the areas that we show that identify as, as a particular area we need to work more on? And then finally, what do we, what are our questions? What are still puzzling? And that right now is looking at the third grade essay and seeing what we can do to, to build that up. So bring that back up to where we expect it to be, so. The same thing in math. You can see there's also a lot of, a lot of black, which means there's no deficit. If it's in red, it means there's, there's a deficit. So for math, I looked at the, the major components. So the geometry, the measurement, the fractions and all of that. So you can see we have a little bit in geometry in thirty-fourth grade. Thirty-fourth grade's still a little bit in the red. It's not worth a lot of the points, maybe four points overall. Whereas some of the other areas, like operations in algebra and measurement, are larger components, but it doesn't mean we still want, don't want to unpack it. So in this area, some majors would be maybe perimeter and area. Are we, are those still close confusers for our students, things like that? And then we have a little bit of a component in the number system in grade eight. Again, not a, a large amount of points, three points. That's their irrational numbers, which is sometimes often a little bit harder to wrap your heads around. And then we have a couple ones that moved from red to black, which we think were a pacing issue when we looked at it. It might have come later in the year for a measurement and data. And I forget what the geometry one was, but they came in later in the year when Mrs. Olivera worked with the teachers. We found out and tried to embed that in some of the current work that they were doing, rather than later in the season. So we were able to close up some of that gap by looking at some of this data. What are we continuing to work on with curriculum? We're still working on project-based or personalized work with the math. So how are they really working with it? Not just skill and memorize base, how are they really making that deep understanding of the math? And then again, the adjustments to practice based on the pre-assessments. And our questions still are, what are the best strategies for intervention? And how can we put those supports into our schedule? Because we don't really want them coming out of their content classes, but we, you know, we have to capture some time during the day. So how can we best do that? Because the day's not getting longer. So what are the best strategies for that? All right, so that's, that's a quick review of crunching of a lot of data. So that's the first portion. The second portion is the new accountability system. Remember, it was based on a, a large amount of numbers that they were looking at that included achievement and growth, as well as absenteeism, graduation rates, advanced coursework. So there's two pieces here. When you take a look at all of those, have, have we met most of those targets? So the state did a one-year target from seventeen to eighteen on how, how a particular school did in a particular area and set what they thought was a reasonable target. It's different for everybody, okay? It was based on how they calculated that on other schools that had done better in the past. I don't know the exact science, but, but that's what they did. And they did it for both all performers and the low performers. So these are our five schools. You can see DeMello, fifty-one percent, Potter, ninety-four, Quinn, seventy-one, Middle School, sixty-two, and the high school, sixty-seven. So those, the percentage of, you know, how many of their targets they met. The state says six, I think that says, but they're saying any percentage fifty or higher shows that a school's improving. Even though they want you to hit the seventy-five, seventy-five is what you have to hit for meeting the target. Anything fifty or higher says you're improving. And the district overall doesn't get its rating from each of the schools. It gets its rating from all of the students. So again, all performers and low performers, the district was eighty percent, eighty percent of its targets. So those are things to celebrate. The second thing that they do is they assign a percentile, which puts schools, it puts them all on the line from one to ninety-nine and says, "How do they do?" They put all the K eight schools together, and then they put the high schools together. And they give you a percentile rank on where you fall in that. So most of our elementary schools fall in that top third, you know, the sixty, sixty-six, sixty-seven. And the high school falls sort of in the middle in that. And this, this is just a big graphic on everything we're working on. So we're still doing the work with our strategic plans and all of our school improvement plans, aligning those. Teachers are setting goals that go with that, and our professional development aligns with that. We're still working in vertical teams, taking a look at best practices in math and that collaboration in writing to try to improve that. And what's new this year is the district content coaches are working together, K eight. We had done some work that was fairly successful with the middle and high school between the math departments and a little bit with the ELA, so we're bringing that down. We want to check, work with that transition between elementary and middle on the language that they're using, so students aren't relearning language as they go across in their content. Horizontal work is still happening at the teams. We have that, the CIA team, which is our curriculum instruction and assessment team, which does a lot of curriculum writing. We have the L three team, which is our level literacy leaders, which is looking at, right now, the reading and writing in the elementary level. And everybody now has professional learning communities and CPTs, not just the middle and elementary. So the high school teachers now have that time embedded in their day with the new schedule. The professional development strands have been same strands for a while, and the Curriculum Council has been working to update that. They're adding math to one of those strands, and the teachers, the feedback on the surveys are showing that they still want to continue some of the previous ones we've done on social-emotional learning, on special ed, co-teaching. We're still going to do the ELL and the technology piece, so. The curriculum development, again, is ongoing. We're still working with the STEM. We're still updating our curriculum, online software, Rubicon. And again, the focus on more opportunities to read and write daily. Again, building that stamina with that feedback that we talked about earlier. And then our support services, we're still working and continuing the RTI, TBIS. And now we have embedded academic support, K twelve, so. So that's just a quick overview. It's a, it's a pretty complex system this year, but hopefully we'll just, they'll keep it the same for a while, right? So we've changed it, what, each of the last three years, so. Any questions?
Turn around, there are changes again.
So, you know, I teach, I'm teaching an education policy class. And, you know, we talk about, one of the things that these accountability laws are designed to do are to help schools and teachers figure out. But they're also designed to help, like, parents in the community figure out how our schools are doing. I can't think of a worse system to provide information to parents in the community. That's, right? Trying to figure out what these scores mean and what they're doing is ridiculous. That having been said, it's the system that we have to live with and, you know, work with. I just wish it would be, this is not directed to you, but more towards the state, that it would provide parents with some better information and community members. I mean, even with you explaining this to us briefly, I still, I mean, I don't quite understand it, and I'm sure, right, the people out there don't understand it at all. And so I get, they're, what they're, they're trying to really do this based on research and best practices and all that, but it's just not a very transparent system that, that provides helpful or useful information. And I imagine for the teachers too, it can be pretty not straightforward as well. You've got to spend a lot of time figuring all this stuff out. So I just wish they'd come up with something a little bit more straightforward, unfortunately.
So for parents, the target is five hundred in most cases. So if I'm getting a parent report, I'm looking to see if they're, you know, either just right on target, five hundred, a little bit above, or a little bit below. And then what they also just put out was a, kind of a parent guide to what's expected at fourth grade or third grade, which is helpful.
I get, I get for an individual child, but it's difficult to sort of know what's going on in your school.
Right.
Right? At the evaluation of the school. And that's what's not clear at all. Although, to be fair, I get, I'm getting, we went, what the, like, we, we had to, like, we finally got our magnifying glass to figure out what the report said this year. We figured that out. But the school stuff, I think, is not particularly useful, and that's unfortunate. But thank you for trying to make it a little bit more clear.
They are useful, they're useful for us to help figure out if we have some curriculum areas that we need to shore up and if we're meeting the increased expectation from the standards. But I, yeah, they are confusing for the regular eye.
Chris?
I think, for me, I think the most helpful slide is the two thousand and eighteen, the one before this, data summary in which you look at your accountability categories. The target is seventy-five percent. Looks like I do have to give props to Potter Elementary School for meeting expect, meeting the target at ninety-four percent. So I got to ask, looking at that across the board, what do you see from a central office standpoint or from a school standpoint as to what worked and what didn't work when you look at these scores?
So each school has individual targets. So Potter's targets and DeMello's targets and Quinn's targets were based on how they performed in two thousand and seventeen. So they're not all the same targets.
Look at that growth.
So, so what we want to see is, you know, if we take a look at what that scaled score they're heading for, which is five hundred, how close we are to that. So that would be another lens to unpack that. And for the, the state is looking at, again, seventy-five percent, but they're saying anybody who's fifty percent or higher is growing. So when we look from a school lens, we look at how students did in the particular area. So whether it's, you know, how they're answering the essay or how they're answering the number sense piece. So we really want to drill down to the, what's happening in the classroom and what, what we can do to support them more in meeting the curriculum standards. So that's what we have, we do at each, each of the schools do that. They unpack their data. We're always looking for ways to improve. Sometimes we forget to celebrate the successes. You know, there's a lot of successes in this data. What I was trying to kind of do for you tonight is kind of explain the system. So in the target they set, which is one year based on what they thought improvement would look like.
Right.
So what they're, what those are going to look like moving forward, we, I don't know. But we do know, we consciously made an effort to make that computer-based assessment start in that seventeen, which was the baseline year. Because we know, we knew the platform was going to be a struggle too. Remember, we talked about that a little bit. So we need to be able to continue to sustain the growth as we move forward. That would be important.
Thank you. So can we talk a little bit about, if we go back to slide, looks like four, Accountability Indicator, Wadings? I'm just curious, because a lot of, this is all new to, to most of us. The additional indicators, the chronic- The additional indicators, the chronic absenteeism equating to ten percent. Can you talk a little bit about what the state considers chronic absenteeism and how that affects us? I think it's important to the folks at home, members, you know, families to know that this is now affecting the scores.
So it's missing ten percent or more of their days in membership. So if their days of membership are a hundred and eighty, it would be eighteen. If they're, if they came late to us and they were only here a hundred days in Dartmouth, it would be ten.
So the state would, looks at each individual, and I'm aware of this, but the state looks at each individual child attendance rate in that whole.
I believe starting in grade one, because they had to.
Do they differentiate between excused and unexcused?
Excuse me?
Do they differentiate between excused and unexcused?
They do not.
So if a child is ill, get in the hospital.
So it's just absent. The only thing, the only piece that you had to catch, because it wasn't well publicized last year, was students that are medically absent. If we provide them tutoring, we need to update our coding of that.
That counts as days in membership.
And the other thing we've looked at are students who were, you know, said they were going to enroll and they didn't enroll. So we've been working at cleaning up that data. Because if they don't come, we don't want to count those first fourteen days as being absent. When they never came, go back and remove them from that. So that take cleaning up, knowing that this is coming. Are we perfect on this? No. Do vacations count? Yes. So all of that factors into that component.
Thank you.
Yeah, and same thing, advanced coursework, same thing. Making sure that you're, you're aligning your course with the state code, which makes it advanced, right? So making sure that those courses are correctly aligned, yeah.
Being diligent with our data collections.
And they're just eleventh and twelfth grade. So if we have students that take AP Biology in tenth grade, they're not included in this, so.
Thank you for the presentation.
I just want to thank you and our staff for the great job they're doing. I think all of the work we're doing in the curriculum alignments, you know, aligning with our state frameworks, the talk that's going on between grade levels, the vertical work, the horizontal work. You know, before Tracy came on board, we didn't have a central person to help us be able to do this so that it's K through twelve and it's bringing us together as a system. Each school, each just, each school is doing the same types of things to help improve instruction. So I think the curriculum instructional work that's being done is, is showing. I mean, you look at the difference between how Dartmouth is doing and the state is doing. I mean, that tells us a lot right there. So I would just say, continue the good work. And I know when we look at scores, we, as you said, sometimes we look at where we need to improve instead of the big picture as to where we're at right now.
And she's done a wonderful job with that. It's not just bringing in a textbook. They're writing units, they're giving each other feedback, they're editing them, they're finding out what works and doesn't work. So they're really working together horizontally and now vertically.
Well, that professional learning community is so important. So kudos to everyone involved. Thank you.
Yeah, just thank you for trying to sort of sort through this in a way that, as you were talking and I was following, and now when I'm thinking of the whole, I mean, it's impressive to see the growth. I'm interested in how they, if you could talk a little bit more about like the low performers, or like what was, what, in capturing all students and then measuring it, you know, and seeing the graph with those low performers, it just makes me think of, and I don't know if, you could talk a little bit about what, what that is trying to capture as far as.
So for low performers, these are just students and how they did the previous year. Who were the bottom twenty-five percent, doesn't matter what subgroup they belong to. So this captures those, what we might have called the invisible kids. They might not have had any sort of support plan. They might not have been, you know, on the radar because they were flagged as at risk. They might have just been quiet, struggling, but, you know, maybe not receiving intervention. So now we, for the most part, they were, but we might find one or two kids that weren't in, on one of our intervention groups. We hope we circle back and get them and make sure that they get the support they need, not just from those pull-up situations, but also in the class. So whether they're doing small group feedback on their writing or they're receiving academic support in math or in the future at the high schools, you can get academic support in anything. They could be getting it in science as well. So it's really making sure that we have an idea of who they are. For the most part, we do, but they're double checking our list with what the state's sending us and making sure those kids are getting the supports they need and the gaps being filled. So now we can see who those students are. Are they transient? Are they, you know, English language learners? Are they just kids that are just struggling? And, you know, those gaps are snowballing. We can help, you know, intervene earlier, so.
Thank you.
I don't think they're going to be new to, if you ask the principals and the teachers.
Right, I'm sure.
But there might be, you know, one or two that we need to make sure that they appear on our list somewhere.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I still think, you know, and everybody knows that I haven't been an MCAS fan from day one, so I'm not, you know, changing my tune here. It seems as though somebody up in, you know, the state, at three o'clock in the morning has nothing better to do, so they think about how can we change the test and, you know, how we're going to rate them and such. But I do appreciate all the information. It is good to see, you know, what all our students are doing. And, you know, my hat's off to, you know, everyone from central office to the building principals, to the classroom teachers, to the aides and everyone in between that, that works with our students to get them to perform as best, to the best of their ability. And I appreciate it, so thank you.
May I ask, I just want to ask one more question and sort of make one more point. Mr. Oliver pointed out the data summary, and I don't want this to get lost because there's press in the audience. This replaces, right, the level one, level two, right, the fifty, like the, but I think it's important to reiterate, that this might have gotten buried, that every school has a different target. And that's pretty new, right? Before, it used to be you had to, everyone had the same goals and you were measured against that. But now what's happening is that each school has different targets. And so that's what makes it hard to, like, you think, oh, it was a level one or a level two, but you don't have that sort of normed benchmark because every school is shooting for something different. They're being measured against themselves. And so it's hard sometimes to compare the schools. So I don't want, because we always report we have level one schools or level two schools or whatever. I don't want it to get lost in any sort of reporting that we can't tell what the targets are for all the schools unless we dig into that, right?
So you can meet your target and have a lower scale score than somebody else, or you cannot meet your target and have a higher scale score because it's based on your own baseline performance.
And as long as you're, what's the word I'm looking for? Growing or, yes, showing improvement.
But it doesn't say anything about raw levels of scores or anything like that. So it's really, it's not transparent at all.
It's completely different.
It's totally different. So I just want to reiterate that, right? When people are talking about, you know, how schools are performing, it's a very different system this time around.
It is, but just keep in mind, it's weighted three to one. So it's not just, it's not an easy thing. I mean, I'm not saying it's, they have to meet their achievement target. That's sixty percent. They have to meet their growth target, that's twenty. For a non-high school, that's eighty percent, you know? That's still a good accomplishment, even though it's their own individual targets. It's still an accomplishment to celebrate. In the district overall, eighty, right? So that's still, even though they're individual targets, they're based on our baseline. We know we, we entered into computer-based testing in seventeen. We still want to keep that trajectory moving, right? In that, in that way. So do I, I think we're going to, remember how most schools were level two? Do I think most people are going to be partially met? Probably in the future, you know? But it's nice to celebrate those that are met, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So that's not an ego, that's a, that's a real concerted curriculum effort toward improvement. I mean, yes, the absenteeism, but that's ten percent. And yes, you know, the English language, ten percent. But the majority of that comes from growth and achievement. So it's still, you know, it's, it's, it's good, it's a good report card.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roy.
So tonight, we have a presentation from some students and Ms. Church who went on a fantastic trip to Scotland. They'd like to provide a little bit of their experience for us.
Can I sign to the video or the videos? We'll fire this one.
Well, while she's setting up, I just, I wanted to thank you for inviting us to be here. I wanted to thank you for granting us permission to pursue this trip about two years ago now. This was definitely the most extensive trip I've ever organized in my career. A hundred and four of us traveled to Scotland, fifty-three students, and the rest were chaperones and tagalongs. It was a nine-day trip, so it was the longest trip we've ever taken. And we had five amazing performances, lots of sightseeing, lots of great cultural experiences. And you would have been very proud to have stood by all of those students that were there. They were excellent representatives of our, of our town, of our school, of our state, of our country. And it was a real pleasure to be with them. So they put together a short PowerPoint presentation so that you can get a glimpse into what our trip was like. And Mr. Newns, thank you for meeting us at eleven o'clock at night when we arrived back in town. You're always there, thank you.
My pleasure.
I'm sorry, and I'd like to introduce our orchestra president. This is Hannah Chamberlain. And Maddie Correa is our vice president. And Charlotte Carrero is our secretary.
Okay, so our first day, we got off the plane and to get over the jet lag, we went for a hike up to Wallace Monument, which was just a short walk from our residence hall. This monument was to honor William Wallace and other Scots who fought for their independence. We, there, we walked up, some of us walked up two hundred and forty-six steps to the top of the building and we got some beautiful views of the surrounding area. And on the right is just a picture of some students relaxing at the residence hall before going up to the monument. On the second day, we went to a monument for the Battle of Bannockburn, which was a major battle in Scotland's independence. We also participated in a simulation there of the battle that took place. Each student got to imitate someone that was in the battle and we got like a hands-on experience, which was really cool and really informative too, so. And then later in the afternoon, we went to Stirling Castle. It was built in the twelfth century upon Castle Hill. Mary, Queen of Scots, lived there and the first attempt of flight in Scotland happened here. So again, we got some beautiful views of the surrounding area. And this was our first performance. It was in a beautiful hall there. It was one of my favorite performances. There were people coming in and out throughout the whole time. Some people were like dancing out in the courtyard, so it was a really amazing experience. And then on the third day, we went to Edinburgh for the first time. We were going to St. Giles Cathedral, which was where we were playing our concert there that day. But on our way there, we realized that the Queen was going to her service that day. And so we were lucky enough to see her coming out of the cathedral and we got to see the military band and a bunch of royal guards there as well. So that was really cool for a lot of us. And the performance there, there were a lot of people, again, coming in and out, people speaking, from all over the world, speaking different languages and stuff. And we got to explore around Edinburgh a little that day on the Royal Mile and stuff like that, so. We have a short clip of one of the violinists that we participated in a workshop with back in Stirling where we were staying one night.
So he was teaching us how to play music in the traditional Scottish way.
He's teaching us a dance in this video.
Oh, hopefully they're sound. Wait, what, on the speakers, Charlotte?
I don't think they're plugged in.
Are they plugged in?
They're not plugged in.
Look at the, the button, the thing.
Nope, the, the green one.
There you go.
I just got in the computer.
In the front? Right in the front.
I will tell you that the performance at St. Giles, at the castle on that first, that first day was one of the most magical performances I've ever experienced in my career, being there with them and listening to, playing the traditional Scottish music that we'd been practicing in that castle that was built sometime in the twelfth century. I did not arrange for the Queen to be there. When we got off the bus, we wanted to get in a little bit earlier to warm up and they said, there's a really important ceremony going on. And we rounded the corner and hundreds of people were just standing there with their phones like this.
Thought they were for you.
And, yeah, right. And sure enough, they said, if you wait about fifteen or twenty minutes, you might be lucky enough to see the Queen. So we all just stood there with our phones.
It was hard to see her, though. Like, a lot of us were like, oh, there she is. But it was just another, like, woman coming out with a big hat on. So we were learning a dance there that they do at these, like, dances that we, we went to one of them later on, but we were just learning a traditional dance there, so, yeah. So the next day, a group of us took a trip to Loch Catrine, which is a beautiful loch in Scotland. We took an hour and a half boat ride out one side where people, we started and then we went across the loch and then people could get off there and ride their bikes back. There was like a bike path along the loch all the way back. So we took the boat back, did not ride our bikes. But, yeah, that was a pretty beautiful ride. It was a nice day to like relax and admire the scenery. And then after that, we traveled to the Highland Games, which you can see in the top right corner. So we saw people doing the hammer throw, cycling on the grass, and there were local vendors there. And then there's a video that I have of someone playing the bagpipes, which is our first experience with bagpipes in Scotland, but certainly many more to follow this.
It should also be noted, yeah, put into the point. We didn't see any rain while we were there. It was sunny and warm every single day, which is very unusual, even in July.
So that evening, we met up with the rest of the groups that we were performing with. There were groups there from Belgium, Canada, Germany, and other groups from the United States as well, Colorado and California. So there were like over three hundred students there participating. As you can see on the left, we took part in a parade through the town of Stirling and people came out of their houses and out of local pubs and stuff to say hello and wave at us. There were more bagpipers. This one's a little bit longer, there's drums too. It's a little bit better of a clip. So, yeah, we were there with other fiddle groups, orchestral groups, and multiple different choral groups as well. On our fifth day, we took a trip to Glasgow, which was our first experience there, and performed in the historic Glasgow City Hall. Which you can see on the left, that's all of the groups squished on stage together, performing. And we had some time also to s- of the groups squished onstage together performing. And we had some time also to spend in the city. Glasgow is a very different city than Edinburgh. We found lots of street art on new buildings and historic buildings, which is really cool. Definitely much more of like a New York-type city, more industrialized and stuff. But that was a really cool experience. And then this is a video clip of all of the groups performing. We played two pieces together. This is Fairy Dance, which is a Scottish dance song. So the next day was probably the highlight of my trip and I think a lot of my fellow classmates' trip. We participated in a Kayleigh, which is a traditional Scottish dance gathering, I guess. So Thorin, who was the one playing the violin in that video earlier of us dancing, and his band performed Scottish music for us and taught us various traditional dances. And then we performed with all of the, or not performed, took part in these dances with all of the other students. They're group dances, so we were like mingling with all these students, and parents were joining in, and Ms. Church's daughter Ella was joining in. So everybody was really having a good time with us. It was loud and a lot of fun.
That was awesome. That was a magical night because we got to see kids who are very quiet, very reserved, just jumping up there, dancing with everybody else. You saw five-year-olds dancing with sixty-year-olds. It was really a wonderful night.
So the next day, we took a trip to the Highlands. This was a bus tour of the Highlands, so we drove up probably like three hours. And our first stop was, as you can see in the top-left corner, the crossing. That's the Hogwarts Express from the movie. So we all hiked up, all hundred-plus of us from Dartmouth hiked up to see this, and we sat and we waited for like fifteen, twenty minutes. And then all of a sudden, this train came chugging by, blowing smoke everywhere. People were taking pictures. So that was really, really cool. And then we also just stopped at like a lookout point, and people got out and took pictures and just took in the scenery. It was pretty amazing to be surrounded by such beautiful scenery. And that's Ms. Church and Ella looking wonderful with the Scottish hills in the background, so.
So on day seven, we went to Cullziean Castle. It was right on the shoreline, so there was a little walkway that you could go through, and you could be right by the water. It was a really surreal place to be. We were climbing around on the rocks and stuff, and I had my shoes off just running around. It was so much fun. That's a picture of the group in front of the castle. We could walk around and see all of the castle grounds. And throughout the castle grounds, we saw some other groups performing. I think there was a fiddle group there that came from Tennessee. And there are different things to do in the castle. There was like a dress-up area where you could wear like medieval clothing and stuff like that. It was really cool.
This is a super short video of the group performing.
So then on the next day, we did the GoApe ziplining and ropes course. It was just a really fun day, a lot of physical activity, and the scenery was just beautiful, as you can see in that image. And then later on that day, if you want to... Later on that day was our final performance. It was the gala performance in Perth. It was at a state-of-the-art performance site, one of the best in Scotland, and it was under direction of Dean Marshall. Dean Marshall is a musician who had been working with the orchestra for a few days. Well, not a few days, but he came down to Dartmouth for a few days to work with us for one of our concerts. And he was just an immense, he left an immense mark on the orchestra. I know that, like, I go into orchestra every day, and I think of something that he taught me, and I'm sure many of my classmates do the same. And there's a picture of us with our loofahs. I don't know if you can see it, but loofahs was like an inside joke on the trip. Everyone, you're walking around Scotland, you look for the loofah, and you know where your group is. So, if you want to... We just wanted to thank, oh, wait, I skipped slightly by accident. So then the next day was our final day, and we went to Edinburgh. We spent the last three hours of the trip there before heading back to the airport. And Edinburgh is just such a nice, like, little quaint town, but it's not, it's actually not quaint at all. It's very big and beautiful, but it feels nice and homey and small sometimes. And it was just a really cool place to just walk around and shop and look at art. So, yeah, that was our last day. So we'd just like to thank Ms. Church and Mrs. Monti for organizing such an amazing trip. This definitely impacted my life in many ways, and I'm sure it did the same for everyone else who went and everyone else who was involved with the trip and planning it. Thank you very much.
It's beautiful. Thank you for that presentation and those videos. It was exceptional. Really was, looked like it was magical, very impactful. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Our pleasure. Thank you guys for doing it. It was pretty much all done.
Yeah, the presentation was great, and also thanks to you guys for organizing this opportunity for our students.
Seriously, it's because of students like these that I do this, amazing kids. So it's easy to make the decision to do these sorts of things.
A lot of work, I know, so thank you.
Yeah, I say thank you also. It's an amazing trip. What a wonderful opportunity. And I was just sitting here thinking, Heather, how could you ever plan something like that with all the people that are involved? Just for a family, it would be something. My gosh, that's wonderful. My granddaughter just started violin.
Yes, she did.
So I'm hoping she goes someplace special.
You'll be sure of that, right? No, thank you. Great presentation, ladies. What a wonderful opportunity for the students and for the adults as well. I wish I had these opportunities when I was younger, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, just thank you very much for doing this and, you know, followed a lot of it going on on Facebook and, you know, seeing the Queen.
Yeah, that was really exciting. That was a huge bonus.
Getting back safe and sound, and that was the big thing. So glad it went, glad it went well, and everybody did fantastic. Very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Do you want me to close this or just leave it?
You can just leave it.
You can leave it.
Can I?
You can leave it.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all set. Some good, some other good stuff. Consent agenda is fundraising activities for the Potter School PTO for this school year.
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Amaro. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. DeMello School, Cushman School PTO?
I'll make a motion to approve the Cushman-DeMello School PTO budget as presented.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, talk about students going overseas. Request from Unified Arts Photography to take a trip to Iceland. Mrs. Cronin and Mrs. Brunet are here.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're proposing a trip for six days and five nights to Iceland at the request of students. No, they think we're our travel agents, huh? They come in and say, "Well, we'll see what we can do." But we'd start in Rachel, I can't even pronounce some of these.
Rekovich.
Rekovich, Rekovich, right? Yes, and the highlights include the Golden Circle, the Skafgafeld National Park, Gulfus Waterfall, the Blue Lagoon, a Volk Museum, another national park, and another lagoon. And our focus is going to be with photography, much like we did with Italy last year. That will come up at a later time, but our AP kids did really well. The kids that did photos in Italy, we had, what was your scores, all fours and fives, pretty much? So they did really well with that, and they were so excited and learned so much as well. I mean, it was all worthwhile. When we had one student I can mention, it was Kayleigh Humison. We were in Venice, and she said to Sue and I, it was her birthday, she said, "This was the best day of my life," you know? And, I mean, she really meant it. It made you cry. So anyhow, this is what we're asking for. We outlined the itinerary. The price includes everything but two dinners, so everything's pretty much included, which is good because then you get a choice to go where the kids would like to go. And I can't say, our trip last year was actually, if you could say something was perfect, it probably was. The kids were great. They were so appreciative and so well-received. And the tour that we did was not a student tour. We were with other adults. And when we landed in Venice, there was one woman that said, "Oh, this teenager's coming on this." She said it to me, and I said, "Yeah, our kids are great." Oh, if I had known that. By the end, she was a convert. She said, "These were the nicest kids," you know? Kids were, everyone was so complimentary, you know? We're so lucky to have such a great student body. So we're looking, again, there's some fundraising opportunities that we'll have for kids. And I think everything else is here. If anyone has any questions, or Sue, you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it.
Any questions, comments?
I went to Iceland last year, and it's, the scenery is stunning. You will get, they will get some really, really amazing photographs there. I think it'll be well worth their visit.
Did you see the northern lights?
We did not. We were supposed to go in March, and we got snowed out, so we had to go in May. So hopefully you will have better luck.
Now, we're just near the tail end.
It depends, yeah, it depends on the conditions. So hopefully I cross our fingers for you because it would be great for them to see that.
Well, Morgan Bozarth, one of our colleagues, neighbors, just returned, and they saw them two nights out of the six they were there. So they were very lucky. They have beautiful photos, you know? So that's very exciting.
You'll have a great time.
Yeah, you loved it?
Not a doubt.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Jenkins and a second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so very much.
Let us know, like, when...
Things happen.
The dinners, the, you know, I mean...
Paint nights were very lucrative for us.
Oh, good.
And it's great because the kids put it on, you know, with Morgan. Morgan Bozarth's a master painter.
When you have like the, you know, not your average shows or the dinners.
Yes.
Anytime I don't have to cook is wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Music Department's permission to participate in national championships at MetLife Stadium on Saturday, November tenth, and returning on Sunday, November eleventh. Mr. Kingsland is here, if you have any questions.
I feel like I should ask a question, Mr. Kingsland. He's been sitting here so patient all night. Instead, I will make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Kingsland.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's my turn. Update on the Greater Nubeford Vocational Technical High School School Committee openings. You should all have, finally, the resumes that were sent to Town Hall by individual citizens, between resumes and cover letters, in interest of two, three, four, five, I've got five of them, and who are interested in serving as our representative to Greater Nubeford Voc. This is one of those joint appointments. It's the chair of the school committee, chair of the Board of Selectmen, and the town moderator. So we'll have a, I'll take our recommendation to them, and hopefully we come up somewhere, we're all in consensus type of deal. It hasn't happened all the time, but we come to...
We can be wishful, right?
That's right. That's right. So, I mean, I'm going to open it up to discussion with my colleagues as to what you have in front of you and what you would like. So, Chris?
Sure, I could start off. I think all of the applicants that I took a look at all have a very good, diverse background. I think, you know, there's several of them that I think would be beneficial for the town of Dartmouth to be on the Voc Tech board. Personally, I know Dr. Cindy Marlin. I have a lot of respect for her. I know she's done a lot for the town, and she's been a huge part with DCTV as well as the 350th celebration. And I know she's got a lot of experience with the media production side of it and that shop. And I know one of the big things that we've talked about in the past, and I know something that Dr. Jenkins has brought up on several occasions, is making sure that Dartmouth's getting their fair, fair share of the deal. And I think she would be a good candidate for this. That's just my two cents, and we can pass it on from there.
Well, without even speaking to Mr. Oliver, I felt the same way. I think all of the, we're fortunate to have five quality people want to serve. But my knowledge of Dr. Marlin, I would be strongly in favor of her position.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Jenkins?
I don't, I don't know any of the candidates all that well. I would say I have been approached by members of other school committees in the communities that are also a part of Voc Tech who have concerns about admissions criteria, funding formulas, things like that. And I know that this school serves our students, and we want them to do well. But at the same point in time, my concern has always been that I want that person who is sitting at the table to be representing Dartmouth and to have Dartmouth's interests as their first and foremost consideration. Many times, the interests of Dartmouth School District and Voc overlap. There are times they do not. And so my biggest concern is that I want that person sitting at the table to put Dartmouth's interests first if and when there is a conflict or a concern. And so in some of the resumes, I saw people talking about serving their alma mater or their high school. And to me, that's not the approach that I want our school committee. They are serving the interests of Dartmouth first. And again, a lot of times, that will be good for Voc. Most of the times, their interests are aligned, if we did that Venn diagram. But sometimes they aren't, and I want to make sure we have that representative there. A particular concern for me is I hear a lot of talk in the community of people saying things like, "Well, I want my kid to go to Voc to get a leg up in college admissions." I don't think that's an accurate statement. I think you're going to leg up on college admissions at Dartmouth High because we offer the sorts of curriculum that colleges look for. But my concern is, is that when people have that approach, we are shutting kids out of Voc who would legitimately benefit from a vocational high school, you know, a career. They want to go on and become an electrician or to work, and that is a lucrative path to the middle class. And if we're not admitting kids who actually want those jobs and careers, we're admitting kids who see that as a path to high school, it's a problem. And so I think we need to start having some hard conversations about Voc, and I want to make sure that the person, whoever that is, I'm sort of agnostic as to who, I don't know these people. But I want to make sure that that person is willing to ask hard questions when they're sitting at the table, like we all do when we sit here sometimes. I'm sure the administration sometimes wishes that we wouldn't ask some questions, but that's part of the job. And so I really, that is my biggest concern, that that person goes to the table with the interests of Dartmouth foremost, and that they're willing to ask the sorts of questions to make sure that the Voc school is serving the kids that ought to be served by that high school. So I, that's, I don't know who that is. I don't know if you're going to talk to any of these people. So I, that's, I don't know who that is. I don't know if you're going to talk to any of these people. But that would be my, I would like whoever is, is chosen to sort of perhaps get that message from us, that that's what, that's what, that's what Dartmouth needs right now. That's all I'll say.
No, Shannon, thank you. That's very important, you know, to consider. And I, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. And in reading through, just to concur that, you know, everyone's qualified. I did sort of have that little step back when, you know, I did read the "It would be nice to serve my alma mater." But looking at all of them and then personally knowing Cindy Marlin, I have to agree with you. If we were to be considering, you know, our, our thoughts, I do feel that she would have Dartmouth's, you know, best interest and fill all of those categories for asking those tough questions and holding folks accountable to those sorts of admissions and, and opportunities for those kids that could really benefit the most in that, in that school. So that would be my, my thought of what we were given, so anyway.
Chris, go ahead. You were going to say something?
No, I'm good.
No, you're good? Okay. Yeah, number one, first and foremost, and in all seriousness, thank you to these five people for stepping up to the plate and wanting to, to do this. I know the pay is unbelievable, so you're definitely doing it for that. Not.
They pay more than us?
Not that I'm aware of.
Five times. Zero, zero. To be clear to our, to people who are listening, right, the pay for all these positions is zero.
That's it.
To be clear about that.
Oh, it makes it interesting. Just makes it interesting. It is whomever gets appointed, whether it's whoever we vote on and that person ends up being the representative. What I would like to do is get them in front of, them and Mr. Shea in front of, you know, here. Sometime in the next, you know, month or so, just so that they're aware of where we stand and what our concerns are, type of deal.
Agreed.
I, I agree with you. You know, to go back to what Shannon said a little bit, about taking slots out of, you know, electricians and everything else. I mean, I can, I can go back to when our oldest was going to, going into high school and Mr. King's, you know, sitting and standing up at the high school, you know, orientation night and said, you know, "If your son or daughter wants to be a hairdresser or, you know, you know, an electrician or a diesel mechanic or an inter HVAC, you know, that, that type of deal." No, that does not belong in Dartmouth. Belongs, we've got a great vocational school, which we do.
Yep.
Greater New Bedford Voc type of, type of deal. That's where they have to go, but I agree. We can give them a lot better, I think personally, and yeah, I'm prejudiced and I agree, to the education that we can give our students here, type of, type of deal. Yes, you know, sometimes they're going into some type of program that they can pick up at New Bedford Voc and carry on into college or into a trade school. And I'm, I'm good with that. Don't get me wrong.
I agree. Thank you for clarifying that. I don't want to say the people that go to Voc shouldn't go to college. You're absolutely right.
They're going, you know, there, there are some that they're going to go into that, you know, from there, they can go to a trade school or they can go into a college and continue what they're working on. And that's, because in some instances, that gives them a leg up on what they're, you know, what they've, what they feel that they're going into.
I have, I have to comment, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Being, being a parent, I sit here on the Dartmouth School Committee and I've been approached by people in town that, "You're on the Dartmouth School Committee. Your wife's a teacher in town. How come your daughter goes to Voc?" Dartmouth High is a wonderful school and my youngest, that's where she's going. But Dartmouth High, a traditional high school, is not always the best choice or the best option.
Absolutely.
I want to be clear in which, and I'm glad, I appreciate you clarifying that, that students do go on to college beyond Voc.
Absolutely.
And it's just a different pathway. That's the way, that's the way I look at it. So I, I just want, I just want that clear.
No, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. I mean, they, they go, you know, different ways.
Yeah, I have two, I have two daughters and two different personalities and two different learning styles, you know?
Yeah, abs, you know? But that, so. You know, I, I look, I look at this and, you know, I mean, I know, I'm fortunate to know, personally know three of the five, you know, applicants, you know, Attorney Fari, you know, Dr. Marlin and Attorney Hunt. You know, I know, you know, the other two personally I don't know and no disrespect, that holds, I hold nothing against them and such, but you know, those are three of the five that I know, so. With that, I'll, that's my two cents and we'll go back and, you know, anybody want to make a motion and we'll go from there.
I would like to make a motion that we, how do I word this? We
Did I appoint you?
Our recommendation be Dr. Cynthia Marland
Okay.
As appointed to the New Bedford Voc School Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, for Dr. Cindy Marlin to be our requ, our recommendation to fill the Greater New Bedford Regional Voc School Committee position. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain. I don't know enough about these candidates to make an informed decision. I would have preferred to speak with them individually, but barring that, I'm, I'm not going to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine. I mean, I have, I will four, zero, one.
It's not any, it's not any especially yearly, this is how we've always done it.
No, 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 this is, this, that, that's, that's, that's it. You're absolutely right. So it's four, zero, one for, for Dr. Marlin. I will let, I'll see Mr. McDonald and Ms. Haskell tomorrow night at town meeting and see what we can set up for a date to try and hammer something out.
Best of luck.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no doubt about it. But, you know, seriously, and again, like I said, whomever is the appointee, I'd like to get that person and Mr. Shea, you know, in front of us to have a discussion.
I think it's important that we're informed as the, as the Dartmouth School Committee, as well as informing the public of what's going on over there.
Absolutely. I mean, if they want to bring, you know, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Kitchen with them too, that's, that's fine. I'm good with that. But, you know, mainly, mainly those two people, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing from the superintendent.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I would very much like for them to come because I, I feel like when I miss our meetings and I read the lovely minutes that are prepared, I know exactly what happened. When I read the Voc minutes, I have no idea what happened in their meetings. So it would be good to get some regular updates.
Yeah.
Just as motion, vote. There's nothing about any of the discussion or anything in the minutes.
I absolutely
I would like to get some regular updates.
And just so you're aware, in 30 years, the minutes haven't changed from Voc, so, you know, no disrespect.
I would also like to comment that considering the amount of money that we contribute to that high school, I know they have wonderful programs, but I know very little bit, little about Greater New Bedford. So if they could come in and do an overview
Sure.
of their philosophy and their programs.
One of the thi, one of the things they used to do a number of years ago, and Mr. Shea was the superintendent at the time, was they used to have, you know, like a, a tour in the morning and then we'd have lunch type of but we would go through the shops and through some of the classrooms and through the building just to see what it was like, you know, what was like and what was going on and that, that type of deal. So maybe we can get, you know, them to, to go back and, you know, they would do it with, you know, one day would be Dartmouth, one day would be New Bedford, one day would be, you know, Fairhaven, that, that type of deal. I mean, it's one of those, I mean, you know, they consider, again, you got to understand that the school is in session, so. They're, you know, but here's the date that they set it up and, you know, we went over.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, I went over from, I was in Fairhaven at the time, so that's how long ago, the last time they had one, to the best of my knowledge. So maybe we can kind of be very nice to them and they'll do it again.
I personally think from the government's side that communication needs to open up.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I do. Okay. All right, so I will see Mr. McDonald and Ms. Haskell tomorrow night and see if we can get this ball rolling. Because I have gotten seriously a couple of phone calls from, from, you know, Mr. Shea wanting to know what's going on. And, you know, it's, yeah, no, it's moving forward, but, you know, all good, all good things take time, so. We're good to go. All right. Very good. That being said, that takes care of that. New business, policies.
So we have two main sets of policies before us tonight. Subcommittee met last week. The one, the first cluster is an update to the nondiscrimination statement and the fourth subsequent policies where that's mentioned. So the update includes the inclusion of pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions and genetic information in all of them. And those that reference employment or educators include military status. So you'll see policy AC, GBA, GCF, JB, and JFBB, all included in red, the areas that were added. And I also reorganize them so they were all in the same order, so.
Michelle, O C D is like aligning. We're getting everything consistent in an order.
It's just a little hard to catch that they're all checked off, that you have them all. Because we found one that didn't have homelessness in it and we, remember we had done that a year ago or more. So I put them all in the same order and added those two or three areas in the same order.
And I'm assuming that this is, these are changes state mandated and federal mandates and such?
Recommended in last spring's release MASC. So this is a first read.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions? Any questions for Ms. Roy?
Kylie has the more intricate one, the student activities account, which is the one that has the highlighted, the underlined area. So he's going to speak to that one.
Thank you. So the changes in red are the recommended changes from our existing policy by MASC. Generally, the three biggest changes are to formalize the language on graduating class funds. So after a class has graduated, what happens to the money that's left over? Inactive student activities, which we actually voted not too long ago, sort of consistent with this, with this policy, but and then student activity, activity deficits, which aren't really a problem for us, but they recommended formalized language. So those are the three major sections that are added that were not in policy. Not to say that we didn't operate consistent with this language, we do, but we've now formalized it in policy. The other major change is a change from the fact that the Department of Ed recommended an outside audit every two or three years, they said. And now they are, the, the new language says that the school committee shall consider in accordance with DESE regulations that an audit be conducted by an outside firm every three years. So we had a review last year by my professional organization, Masbo, to take a look at some of, at our policies and our procedures, just to make sure that we were compliant with what the Department of Ed guidelines are. And we did make some changes at that time to become compliant and to formalize some things like you, you actually voted this year, all of the student activity accounts, which is something that the school committee hadn't done on a regular basis before, and that was a recommendation. So, so this sort of formalizes those recommendations and adds more language into, into policy that was really already established in procedure. On behalf of the answer, any questions you might have?
Questions and comments? Again, these will come back to us in November. Okay. Next item on the agenda is proposed school committee, meeting Yeah, say that fast three times. Proposed school committee meeting dates for the winter to get us into, into March.
Yes.
Type of deal. Dr. Gifford?
Yes, so we've given you a tentative schedule and I think it probably would be best for you to just take it perhaps. I mean, we know we have our next couple scheduled. Take a peek at those and maybe at the next meeting, come back and determine if those are okay. No, in red, we are trying to get ahead of ourselves and we've talked with Mr. Kylie about possible hearing dates for the budget, et cetera, so really looking ahead and when various votes would be taken. So we've also referenced last year's hearing dates at the bottom for as comparison. So once again, if you want to take those with you, our next meeting date, of course, is already scheduled for November 5th. And then we have a few after that, so then we can go over those next time.
Can think about a question. Dr. Gifford?
Mm-hmm.
I had the brief discussion with Mr. Kylie, but I'll throw this out to my colleagues too, is I'm just wondering, I mean, I don't have a problem with February 11th for the school choice vote, type of deal. That's fine. But I'm just wondering, and again, I know it's kind of on the same as last year, but if we could just, you know, does it work? I mean, we can still get the budget whenever we get it, which is fine, but we, you know, a chance, you know, if we moved, you know, the public hearing on a, on a 2020 budget to March 18th and then the, the vote to our next meeting, type of deal, does that mess up what Town Hall is looking for? I'm just, you know, again, I'm looking at, thinking we get, you know, at some point in time, we may have the House Ways and Means budget versus having, you know, just the governor's budget and some better numbers to work with so that, you know, things are not changing all the time, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, again, I don't know what Town Hall has and Finance Committee and such. I'm not trying to
And we can certainly leave those off for now as we get closer. Just be aware of those things.
I don't know if Town Hall is, you know
Who knows when they'll have their numbers?
Mr. McGinnis being, you know, new on board with this, he's going to want a little extra time
Right.
to put things together.
Yep.
That's just my, just my thought on it. And I don't know what the rest of my colleagues think about it, but I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, we can, yeah. And as usual, we're flexible and we all work within what we have, so.
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
So as some of you know, right, I will not be here in the spring and so I will need to have a conversation with you, Mr. Chair, about sort of this. But I am wondering if it would be possible to move the school choice vote one meeting earlier?
Yep.
I would like to be here for that and I will most likely be gone by the 11th of February.
Sure, I'm good, I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
So if we could do that, that would be great. And then I'll sort of speak to you about plans.
Sure, that's fine. I'm good with that. Carry luggage, get guided to us. Very good, no, that's fine. You will be missed, you know.
Thank you.
But that's good. Okay, yeah, we'll move the school choice. We'll just have to make sure that we get that one because there's publications that have publication notices and this, so. Okay, no, I'm good with that. Okay, that takes care of that. Superintendent's update.
Yep, just a few, few things. We've recently met with, actually, it was a couple of weeks ago already, but I think I reported on that meeting with, with the emergency management team prior. But just as a reminder, this week, October 17th is our early release day and our elementary schools will be working with a police department, each one of them running the staff through the Alice Drill, like we've done at the high school and middle school previously. So continuing that work as well as continuing the work in the classroom with the students as far as teaching them about intruders in the building, et cetera. And so that's ongoing. And the, Ms. Roy's been meeting once again, educator evaluation has been changing the rubric with state, talk about changes. Has updated the teacher rubric and she's been meeting with a team of folks to go over that language so we can come to consensus on that. The principal rubric has also been changed and now they're looking, at my last meeting with the executive board, folks from DESI came to talk about how they're going to change the the, they're looking for feedback to adjust the superintendent rubric, so just hang on, more to come, right? The curriculum council got up and running again this, last week, and where folks were with Ms. Olivera, looking at the survey feedback that we gave, that the staff gave to us about professional development, et cetera, and really to come to, looking at the strands that we've been providing for the last three years, and on social, emotional, technology, and co, co-teaching practices, et cetera, so that those folks can help inform this year's and, and going into the future's professional development offerings. Mr. Kylie and I met with theater group representatives this, is today Monday? Today's Monday, last week, at their request, a bunch of nice folks that work hard with the theater group, looking for some additional pods, if you will, space, storage containers, and as you know, those of you that have been in their productions, the stuff that they create and use is, is sometime blossoming out of the high school. So we're working with them to try to provide them some more storage space. They were very appreciative of that. And the one-to-one initiative is really ready to go. I think you saw on Facebook the little, our tech department and the Chromebooks, I went down and look at everything that they've got going. I think very shortly, we are rolling them out to this junior, juniors and seniors, they're ready to go, with a turnaround in a week or so, with hopefully if they're, come in, Mr. Kylie did sign the purchase order for the next 950 Chromebooks for our freshman, sophomore, and our grade eight students. So it's really in the works, and from what I understand, the kids are ready for that. And I just wanted to mention, I know I sent the article to you, but I also wanted to give a shout out to Amanda Lawrence, our high school librarian, who had, we received another email from her how excited she was, and she's, if you know Amanda, she, her excitement really like pours out of her pores, but her article, that was actually the headline article in the school library journal, and I hope you read it, because it really does describe some project work that she does with one of our English teachers, and, you know, we're just really proud of her for that. So just wanted to give a little public shout out to her, and that's it.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, I know Shane talked about it a little bit, but, you know, fall sports are ongoing, good luck, you know, continued success to them as they move forward. By the time we, next meeting, they'll, we'll be going into tournaments and such, so we wish them all well there, and, you know, the band had a good weekend, and is continuing, continuing on. We're headed to Somerset Saturday night, and then into the Connecticut area for the next couple of weeks, so, Nezba finals, so good luck to these kids, and all the students and all the different activities that are going on at the school. It's, there was a dodgeball tournament coming up, I think, next week, so...
Yes, yes.
I know, I should be interested, and I'll have to get to that, so that's it. Anything else from my colleagues?
I want to, can I, unless you were going to say it, Catherine?
Sure.
I was going to add about the unified basketball team tomorrow.
No.
No, no, I wasn't. You mentioned an event, tomorrow Unified Basketball Team is playing at the high school, if anybody can stop in. I think it's at 5:00.
Oh, okay.
I'm planning on running over, so.
Okay.
Very cool. Bye.
You've got your...
Yeah, and speaking of unified basketball, if I may, I'm almost sick of talking about it, but it's important that I keep talking about it, because we don't meet until after the event, but not this Sunday, but the following Sunday, it's October 28th. Doors open at 10:00 a.m. There is a resource fair, and craft fair, and blood drive, and support group training, and unified basketball game, and lots of amazing resources that if you or anyone that, I can't stress this enough, there are going to be physical people there, not a phone line waiting to speak to somebody and getting moved and waiting and going to the right extension. There'll be physically people there from over 100, well, we have 104, 150, I think we're supposed to have 146, but we have 150 tables, 75 of them are southeastern Massachusetts resources, agencies, nonprofits, businesses that are there to talk to you about what they can offer, your family. So if you know of anyone in your family and your neighborhood, or even if you just want to shop a craft fair, every single penny that, our, oh, the resources are there for no cost, and every single penny raised from our raffle and all the minimal craft fair spots goes back to what we've done in the past. We've done several things, but we're really excited to give it back to our unified program. So every single penny, it's a great day, a lot of fun, and if you would like to donate blood, you can register in advance, AmericanRedCross.org, or you can show up the day of, and they'll, they'll be there for you. But, yeah, Sunday, the 28th, from 10 to 3 at Dartmouth High School, so, thank you.
Shannon?
So I just want to remind everyone that the Dartmouth Education Foundation Spelling Bee is coming up, that's going to be November 8th. This year, we are doing a first come, first flight for the teams, because we find that everyone tends to get their teams in right before the deadline, so if you get your teams in early, you will get an earlier flight. And so we're trying to get the, the sponsors and flights all set by the 23rd, and you can go, if you're interested in putting together a team or donating, you can go to DartmouthEducationFoundation.org, and we have a website, and the flyer's on there, and we also have a Facebook page. But we're also this year, we're going to encourage people to come attend, we're going to have sort of door prizes and giveaways during the spelling bee for people who are in the audience, so it should be lots of fun, so that's November 8th at 7:00.
What's the sponsorship for a team?
It is $300 for a team. I'm hoping that the school committee would be willing to sponsor a team of either administrators or teachers again this year, unless any of you want to spell.
I? What's the date?
Nobody has to spell, because I don't, I'm out, I do the words, so it'd have to be the four, the, for you. Or you can just generously sponsor a team. I know Mr. Tebow in the back there is gunning to try to put together like a winning team. He's got his sights set high, so we could sponsor his team or the administrators, but we will put it...
I think we'd be better at spo, just sponsoring.
All right, excellent. So I will, I will let you all know who to write the check to, it's the Community Foundation to get the tax benefits, but it's November 8th.
Okay, that's fine.
Awesome.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm not going to be here.
Okay. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, November 5th. We'll either be here or we'll be, depending on what's going on with the...
We'll give you updated.
Central office will keep us updated with the lab at the high school type of deals, I'm not sure where, but we'll do that at 6:30. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and not return to open session.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, unrolled call vote, please.
John Nunes.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Carol Karafodis. Chris Oliver.
Yes. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Don't forget town meeting tomorrow night. Thank you, and have a good evening.